To order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counsel President Leida.
Here.
Counsel Pro Temposi.
Here.
Counsel member Sweeney.
Here.
Counsel member Shaw.
Here.
Counsel member Murphy. Counsel member Middlebrooks. Counsel member McClinton.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Harris, Councilman Middlebrooks did let me know he will be late, so if you can note his arrival when he comes in a few minutes. If everyone would please stand for the invocation to be led by Councilman Shaw and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to be led by Councilman Sweeney.
Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer in a time of sickness. I pray that you would heal the sick and your protective hand would be on the rest of us. We thank you for the city and the people in it and all the blessings you've given us, and we pray that you would just continue to bless this city in your name. Amen.
Attention, salute pledge.
Pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, sir. We now have several reports. I think we'll begin with the mayor. Mayor, I believe you have some recognitions and a couple of proclamations.
We have a proclamation tonight. I would ask Ms. Deborah Fisher to come up. Deborah, is she here? Hey, Deborah. How are you doing? So we are recognizing and having a proclamation tonight on Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and Ms. Fisher is here to represent, so I would like... We're gonna step right over here, and we're gonna have her read the proclamation to you.
Whereas the city of Hoover seeks to enhance public welfare, protect public safety, and promote human flourishing for all residents and visitors by declaring that freedom from human trafficking is a fundamental human right, and whereas human trafficking is a form of criminal exploitation in which victims are forced to work in debt bondage, forced marriage, and labor and commercial sexual exploitation of adults and minors that are induced through force, fraud, or coercion, the city of Hoover, Alabama is committed to ensuring that our community is prepared to recognize signs of human trafficking. And whereas the World Games 2022 Birmingham is an international sporting event that will bring thousands of athletes as well as countless tourists and media to the Birmingham metro area, and whereas an increase in tourists seeking entertainment, including commercial sex, increases the potential risk for exploitation and human trafficking, and whereas due to its isolating nature, many individuals remain unaware that trafficking is a threat to their neighborhoods, families, and children, the first step in eliminating human trafficking in our community is to educate others. We must work diligently to ensure that all frontline industries, educators, and first responders are aware of this issue and how to spot it. And whereas we will continue our efforts to make the city of Hoover a trafficking-free zone by combating the human trafficking of our children and vulnerable adults and mitigating the associated public safety, economic, and health risks to our community in collaboration with anti-human trafficking organizations by combating labor trafficking, servitude, and commercial sexual exploitation through comprehensive education of our staff, the implementation and enforcement of a zero-tolerance policy against any act which may support human trafficking, and supporting collaborative, community-based solutions across a continuum that includes prevention, recovery of victims, and prosecution of perpetrators, and ask all citizens of the city of Hoover to join us in promoting a shift away from the culture of tolerance towards human trafficking. Be it resolved by Frank V. Brigado, by virtue of the authority vested as mayor of the city of Hoover, do hereby proclaim January 2022 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month and the city of Hoover a trafficking-free zone and encourage all residents to join us in raising the visibility of this crime and to become more informed about ways to prevent, to recognize, and to respond to potential victims of human trafficking in our community.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the Child Trafficking Solutions Project and myself as a resident of Hoover, thank you to the mayor and to the council for your partnership in this fight against human trafficking. The Alabama Homeland Security Office has estimated that in the Birmingham metro area, which includes Hoover, the commercial sex industry is a $110 million industry per year. That's a conservative number. It only includes what can be tracked, and it does not include child sex trafficking or illicit massage parlors, which can earn $800,000 or more a year. So the trafficking-free zone is a very important initiative. It brings awareness and training within our city so that people may notice the signs and the symptoms of human trafficking. This then allows victims to be set free and hopefully prosecutions of traffickers. And it's also very important to be talking to our students about the dangers of human trafficking as well as educating our community and parents. No school unfortunately is free from the threat of human trafficking. So thanks to the actions of the mayor and the city council, we are hopeful to keep more children safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we would like to take this opportunity to begin recognizing when we can individuals that have completed their college degrees or advanced degrees while at Hoover. And it's something that our city has been offering for probably 40 years, and that's the opportunity. You can come to work for the city of Hoover, and after you've been here a year, we will pay for your college education. And you have to maintain a certain grade point average, and we've had many, many people go through that. And we'd like to recognize Jamel Allen, if he would come up. Jamel, and his wife, Is Francesca, is here with him. We want to get you up as well. But, you know, to work a full-time job as he does, Officer Allen's been with the Hoover Police Department for eight years now, for over eight years. He's served as a patrol officer for many of those years. He's currently assigned to our Compact 2020, just right in front of that. Jamel, thank you. Compact 2020, and they specialize in gathering information for school resource officers, coaches, teachers, parents, community leaders in hopes of identifying students and young adults who are at risk of substance abuse. Jamel obtained his Master's of Justice Administration from Faulkner University in 2021. He's fluent in Spanish and certainly helps our officers because certainly we have a large Spanish population in the metro area, and he assists with that. But, you know, to go to school and be married and have a family and do all of those things, it really takes a special person, someone that wants to continue to better themselves. And we are grateful to have employees like you that want to do that very thing. We thank you for your service. Thank you for allowing him the time to do that. And we congratulate you on getting your master's degree. Thank you. And we would like to recognize as well, we recognize our employees that have hit a milestone. 25 years tonight is the milestone that we are identifying. We've got Brian Johnson here. Brian, come on up. He has Jeremiah with him, his son, and Denise. Officer Johnson was... Y'all are welcome to come up if you want. Y'all want to come up? No, don't want to come up? Okay. Officer Johnson was hired in 1997. He started in the jail with us and went full-time in the jail in 97, then in 2000 became a full-time police officer. And he served in different assignments as a patrol officer, dare officer, and school resource officer. So he's been working in the schools... There you go. Welcome, young man. Thank you. Since 2010, where he's been an effective role model and mentor. When he came to the SRO unit, Brian and another SRO taught Too Good for Drugs to our Hoover City School fifth graders all over the city. Currently is a school resource officer for Brock's Gap, and he serves on other SRO details. Our SROs are incredibly invaluable. We love them so much. Our schools love them so much. And if you have an opportunity... How many folks get to go through our schools? We got any... The kids love our SRO officers, and they are mentors. And this gentleman I know personally is absolutely every bit of that. And he's just a fine example of the type of employee that we have, and we're so grateful that we have individuals like that. Sure we should stick around another 25 years. Congratulations. Next, we have Lieutenant Roger Memes. Roger, come on up. Your wife, Kim, she's welcome. Kim, you gonna come up? We're gonna have to get you up later. Come on up. We're proud to have you. Here's children Chandler, Savannah, Connor, and Parker. Come on up. We want the whole group. What a great family. Roger came to work for us in 1997 as a firefighter. Actually, we hired him from the Birmingham Fire Department. I'll give a little trivia about that after our next person comes up. But he had a nice, short career at Birmingham, but a lot of great training there. And he came to our department in 97 and went to Station 5 in Bluff Park and really stayed there most of the time that he's been here in Hoover. And he was assigned to Station 5 even when he got promoted as a lieutenant. He's now moved to Station 8 and is working out on the eastern side of town. Is that right, in Greystone? You're back at 5? Back at Bluff Park? Well, that's where you want to be anyway. I had the pleasure of working with this individual as a firefighter myself, and I can tell you he's a class guy, somebody you want to follow in the room that's on fire. You need medical care. He's a top-notch medic as well, just a wonderful leader. And again, a great example of the type of employees that serve in our city. Thank you so much, Roger. And our last but not least is our fire chief. Chief, come on up. Chief Kevin, we know him as Clay Bentley and his wife Julie. Julie, you want to come up? And Brooks and Annabelle, Abby Roche, who's coming up? Good to see all of y'all. So Chief Bentley, prior to coming to Birmingham in 1997, he worked five years at the Birmingham Fire Department with Scott Memes. They actually started at Birmingham together, and they started at Hoover Fire Department together. So that's just a little bit of trivia. It's kind of unusual, but we are so pleased to have both of them. And you can see both of them are rising through the ranks, and this one has risen all the way to the very top. The chief was promoted to a lieutenant in 2003 and worked out of Station 5. Then in 2007, he was promoted to captain, where he worked at Stations 3, 4, and 6. In 2016, he was promoted to a battalion chief. And in 2017, he became the fourth fire chief for the city of Hoover and actually the third paid fire chief. The first one was a volunteer chief. And so in our 50-some-odd-year career, we've had four chiefs, and he is number four. Throughout his careers, he's worked at 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Chief is just an incredible person. Anybody that knows Clay, Chief Bentley, will tell you he's just... His morals are outstanding. His work ethic is outstanding. He's an incredible family man. But he's best known around Hoover and Chilton County for... What's he best known for?
Peaches.
Peaches. He's a peach farmer, raised on a peach farm all his life, and we got some really good peaches along the way. And that might have been why he got on the first time. I don't know. Might have had something to do with it. No, but he's a good person. Clay, we are so grateful for all that you do and how you lead. Our department now has just become accredited, one of the few, I think maybe 200 in the entire United States that actually have gone through the accreditation process and received it. And we're the only municipal department in the state of Alabama that has that rating. So that's all because of his leadership, and we are so grateful for him. And also, Ms. Julie, she conducts our Miss Hoover contest each and every year and does a fabulous job there. So they're well ingrained in our community, and we're grateful for them. And they smile a lot, especially that one on the far right. Good to see y'all. Thank... Congratulations, chief.
Thank you, mayor. I'll now ask Mr. Rice to give us an update on our flood damage.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had great progress to report, and this will actually be the final time that we'll come for a public update because I think we've reached a point of stability in terms of processing all the damage reports and things that we had on our end. We'll wait till those come up. He's working on it. Okay. I'll skip to the good part. Our small business assistance report that came in, you know, we made the rec center available to the SBA to do an in-person assistance center, and they've been operating for several days now. At the end of last week, they reported that in the state of Alabama, they've already distributed more than $1.2 million in individual assistance. I'm sure that number has gone up since we got that report on about Thursday of last week. We don't know that all those dollars came into Hoover. We don't have that level of detail. But we do know that the majority of the damage was in Hoover and Pelham. So we think the majority of qualifying cases were probably in our immediate area. Thank you, sir. So these numbers have not changed. Still 27 public projects, 390 private damage reports. We did receive the presidential... You can go to the next one, please, ma'am. We did receive the Presidential Disaster Declaration. There is an application deadline that we're working to try to make sure that the public knows about of February 21st. So anybody who believes that they have experienced damage needs to be sure that they have applied for that assistance by February 21st. Next slide, please, ma'am. You can go ahead. I'm sorry. I've already covered that one. There you go. Thank you. We still have one project that is pending and one that is underway. The pending project will be there for a while. There's a lot of design work that needs to happen. We'll just bring you an update to the council by email when all public projects have completed. But we've substantially completed those 27 projects. Next slide, please, ma'am. That's the one that we've talked about before. It's around Deodera at Star Lake. The Marywood Lane project is underway. They've been doing excavation work. They had to do some tree removal. There are several things happening there so they can get into the site and pull out the old piping that's damaged and replace it. That's a pretty major repair, and that should be completed in the coming days. And then once we're able to release a contractor at Deodera, we'll bring you the word when that is complete as well. Next slide, please. Financial impact numbers, you've allocated to date 2.25 million for public repairs. We've expended 2.2 of that, and the remainder will be paid out as those last two projects are completed. We still have the 309,000 that's allocated. That expense number is actually what has been paid out of the 309. We expect that'll start to go up pretty sharply as we see invoices from the different engineering firms that assisted our engineering department. And our total city overtime for this is at $44,493, and that has not changed. Are there any questions on the report before I go to the last section? Okay, we have several of our engineering staff here. I'd like to ask y'all to come forward if you wouldn't mind doing that. I see Rita staring at me. She's not real happy about being called down front. Maybe she'll forgive me. Our city engineer, Chris Reeves, the office manager who really runs the show, Rita Harper. Keith McKay is here, Jason Welch, John Anthony. I think Blake Miller was out today. So I thought it was important that we bring these folks forward. These people, you know, we throw the term around a lot, the tip of the spear. They have been the tip of the spear for this entire initiative. Even actually well before the events of October 6th, they were already out in the field with a lot of routine drainage inquiries. And these are the folks that have gone out and met our public personally. They've dealt with a tremendous amount of phone calls and emails. They've been on the side of the street with people. And they're the names and faces that we've heard thrown around a lot, sometimes not always fairly, but they've done a lot of great work. And I thought it was important to bring them in. This has been their, kind of their Super Bowl, one that they would have rather not participated in, I can assure you. But the things that they've done in coordinating the outside assistance that came in, I thought bore recognition. So I wanted you to see who they are and understand the work that they've done under some pretty withering conditions over the last several weeks. So we appreciate you guys. Chris, thank you for your leadership. I know you're also thrilled to be up here. I can see you. I can see it on your face. But y'all have done great work, and I know that we... Sometimes it's easy not to see that from City Hall, but we do see what you've done, and we appreciate that very much. And they'll all start talking to me in about two weeks. Mr. President, that concludes the drainage report, unless anybody has anything. And then I've got some additional comments we talked about on garbage service. We ran a report. We've had some issues, as y'all are aware. And you've all been receiving communications, and we've been cooperating to get that information over to Am Waste. We ran a little bit of a retrospective on total complaints received the last six months of the previous vendor and then up through the month of December, which would be three months of Am Waste. We were seeing an escalation starting in May, a sharp escalation. In May of last year, with the previous vendor, we had 185 complaints. By August, that had ballooned up to 887 complaints for the month of August, so a pretty substantial increase. It had tapered down to 492 in the final month of operation. So I think that vendor was trying to wrap some things up, deal with some issues, and try to make a, you know, a good, responsible exit from the contract. In October, as you would imagine, it spiked back up. We had a new vendor, new drivers, new routes, people learning their collection days. There were just a lot of things going on. But the peak was 1,083 complaints in October, which was the first month of operation. And then that immediately started to cascade downward. In November, we were at 489, and in December, we were at 387. And I will send these numbers out to you so you guys have them. The picture that that shows to me is things started to get pretty rugged under the last few months of the previous vendor. They did do some things in that last month to try to leave things in good shape. Of course, we saw a spike the first month that a new group took over, but that immediately started to drop again. We think we're gonna see a little spike in January. We don't think it'll be back up to 1,000. And we've had a lot of conversation with Am Waste. Couple things happened. And, you know, we've heard it for two years now. But they did have a substantial number of their drivers come down with Omicron variant of COVID, once that's making its way through the neighborhood, just like every other organization. But one thing that we think threw us in a ditch was the holiday service. And so with Christmas and New Year's falling on the same day every year, that puts the same routes, the same citizens, not getting service on those two days. And under this contract, it's a little different. They don't stagger service and try to play catch-up like previous vendors have done. And that's really hurting us, and I think they're seeing that. We get a little break in 2022 because Christmas and New Year's fall on a Sunday. So luckily, we have a year that nobody's trash is gonna get picked up on those days anyway. But we do have to deal with 2023 and beyond. So we're having conversations with Am Waste about ways that they can put extra crews on on the days following a holiday. And so they're gonna bring us a plan for holiday season 2023 and beyond to augment. We may do some drop sites if there are people who want to bring their own garbage to us, but we'll try to augment at the driveway and have enough crews out in the days following the holidays, you know, the days that we skip holiday collection. So we think that we can improve on that. They've also put an on-call schedule together for their drivers right now for Sundays. So they have committed to us that they will hit missed collection on the next day, not the next day for that address, but the next day of the week. So if you're missed on Monday, they're gonna work on getting it on Tuesday. And in order to fulfill that on any Saturday misses, they're gonna have drivers on call for Sunday. This won't be if one or two people in the city got a miss. But if we have a street, a neighborhood, maybe a side of a street, because sometimes that happens, they'll call somebody in on Sunday, and they'll run those collections. We're also working on another backup plan. We do have a small rear-load unit that we've used in the past for parks that the city owns and operates. And Public Works is putting together a plan to have that available for the same type of, you know, group of misses. If Ms. Jones is missed, we're gonna try to get her the next day. But if we have a neighborhood that somehow doesn't get run or a substantial number of houses, we're gonna be prepared to swing into action and try to make that happen. So might see trucks out a little past 7:00 PM, but that's okay. We'd rather try to get the service done. And with that, I'd take any questions you might have.
Any questions about either topic?
Mr. President, just one quick question. Mr. Rice, how does the education campaign, how is that progressing as far as the infographics on top of the carts and so forth? I know some neighborhoods have received those, but when can we expect that to go citywide?
Yeah, they asked us about priorities, and we told them that picking up people's bins that they don't want, we had a lot of people saying, "Well, if I can put everything in one can, I don't need both cans." So they've been trying to get Am Waste to come back and pick up a can. We've asked that to be the lowest priority because we kind of get to that when we can get to it. And then we've asked them to make the education campaign behind collection service. So if they have to choose between assigning somebody to drive the truck or put the labels on the cans, we've asked them to, you know, staff the trucks. I don't know that we know a completion date for that, but I know they're making progress as they can. They've also recovered in terms of staffing. They have their people back. They had a couple of people leave for other jobs, which is happening, and they've backfilled those positions. So now that they're back up to full staffing, I think they'll be able to make more progress on that. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. We'll now move to our consent agenda. The consent agenda is presented as a group of items that the council will consider. I'll first ask, is there any member who would like to have any item removed from the consent agenda and move to the regular agenda? The council will read and vote on these in a block. If there's any member of the public here who would like to speak for or against or on behalf of any one of these items, we'll be happy to move it to the regular agenda. be happy to move it to the regular agenda. Anyone here to speak on any item you see listed before you on the consent? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Corley, if you'll please read the items.
Item number six is the approval of minutes of the January 4th, 2022 meeting. Resolution 662522 authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute a facility usage agreement with Motor Trend Group LLC for the use of the Hoover Met Complex for the Hot Rod Power Tour as provided in the agreement attached to the resolution as Exhibit 1. This event will be held on June 15th, 2022. Resolution 662622 authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute a renewal agreement with Brentwood Services Administrators, Inc. Resolution 662722 authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute a renewal agreement with Midwest Employers Casualty Company. Resolution 662822 authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute a renewal agreement with Tableau Software LLC. Resolution 662922 accepts a change order, closeout documents, and certificate of substantial completion for the re-roofing of Fire Station 2 through bid number 21-005 to decrease the project cost in the amount of $5,314. Resolution 663022 authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Jefferson County Commission regarding debris removal and monitoring services, and Resolution 663122 authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute a contract with Shelby County.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. We'll now move to our regular agenda, and each item will be read by the city attorney, will be discussed by the council, and each one will have public input before any vote is taken. We'll begin with item number 14, ordinance number 22-2547, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance approves the request of Darren Boykin on behalf of Walmart to amend certain conditions placed on the zoning of the property at 2780 John Hawkins Parkway, Alabama Highway 150, as set forth in the Exhibit B to the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance number 22-2547.
Second.
We have a motion and second for adoption of the ordinance, any questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Mr. Vickery?
Yeah.
If you'll come to the microphone, give us your name and address, you'll be recognized for three minutes, please, sir. We'll start the clock when you get rolling.
I'm Barry Vickery, live at 780 Cohaba River Estates, I'm one of the directors of the Homeowners Association, also a plaintiff in the lawsuit that was filed 22 years ago, and I want to give y'all copies of newspaper articles, 1132000, it explains the mediation and settlement I guess the point is, last meeting, I provided y'all with a copy of the judge's order dealing with Walmart and Colonial Properties and the city of Hoover, I provided you with a settlement agreement between the parties, and I provided you with court report excerpts, some 50 pages where all this matter was discussed and approved, these 24 restrictions. Now, this matter is in litigation, this is premature, before y'all make a ruling on this, you need to let it work through the system, because that agreement provides remedies for us, one of them was to sit down with us and work out any changes. I'm sorry that Walmart has veggies that aren't fresh this year, but for 21 years, they were fresh, and Publix has fresh vegetables every day, and I just don't think it's right to breach this agreement, and it is an ongoing agreement. And, you know, there's something to be said that when a city goes against an agreement, a court agreement, and won't stand behind it, there's something, you know, just not quite right about that. But as I say, this is working its way through the court system, and y'all need to hold off on this until it resolves, and, you know, there's gonna be consequences either way, either to the city, to Walmart, to my neighborhood, or to Colonial Properties, because there is an agreement and is in existence, and the judge's order, it's an automatic stay right now. So I'm asking y'all to table this, let it work through the court system in the next few months, and then we'll continue it.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Anyone else like to participate in the public hearing?
Paul L. Curry, 1802 Cohaba River Estates. If you lived in Hoover during the original Walmart fight, you know how huge that was. Citizens from all over western Hoover mobilized and invested much more time, money, effort, and emotion than for any other fight in Hoover's history, okay? A group called Concerned Citizens for the Future of Hoover was formed to make this fight, and as its president, I presented to the city council a petition with 2,610 signatures on it, okay? The zoning and council meetings were so well-attended that the fire marshal would not let everyone in, okay? Citizens did research on the impact of the Walmarts in other cities in this country and in other countries, and produced a 20-page report and gave a series of formal presentations, okay? The local TV news channels and the Birmingham News covered all this very extensively, okay? Hundreds of thousands of dollars were spent on the legal fight. All that resulted in a settlement agreement and a court order that made these restrictions part, that these restrictions were part of, okay? And Hoover and Walmart were both parties to that agreement. Now, during the two elections that followed that, that citizens group was reactivated, and in the first election was a major influence, and in the second election was the dominant influence on the elections that resulted in the incumbent mayor and all but one of the council members being voted out of office, and the one council member who had voted against the Walmart was elected mayor, okay? Now, subsequent administrations have done more to earn the trust of the citizens, and that citizens group went dormant and has since been dormant, but the trust of the citizens is a valuable thing, and it should be protected. Now Walmart wants Hoover to violate that trust by reneging on the legal agreement that it made with its citizens, okay? Now, the agreement has provisions in there for how to change those restrictions, okay? Walmart should follow those procedures, so I'm requesting that you deny Walmart's request and ask them to abide by the procedures that they and Hoover formally agreed to.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to participate? Yes, ma'am.
I had to check some out to keep the clock, so.
Our names are on it, there you go.
I swore I wasn't gonna get up here. My name is Janet McGowan, I live at 778 Cohaba River Estates and have lived there since Yes, I was 10, no, I wasn't. I would just like to reiterate that it is unfortunate that the current administration and Walmart Colonial Properties have forgotten that they are party to this legal settlement. There are many, many parties to the settlement, very few of them are here. The facts remain that this matter is under current litigation. Not you, the generic you, nobody personal, a person cannot come along later and decide they don't like a legal agreement and just change it. You don't get to do that, that's not the way our country works, that's not the way our legal system works, that's not proper behavior. Y'all weren't here, I mean, some of you lived here, worked with you. Hi, John.
Hello.
You were working elsewhere, but we've been here all along, and maybe y'all don't remember the reason for the lawsuit, but there was some backroom dirty dealing, and we caught some city people illegally annexing land and cutting deals, and that's, we don't want to go back to those days, it was ugly. I would just like to reiterate that this matter is, it was litigated, it was, I swear I wasn't getting up here, and I didn't prepare anything. I would encourage you to let the process work properly, I would encourage you to follow what the settlement says on the proper way to handle these things, and I really, I don't hate it that y'all didn't know about it, you should have known about it, city should have known about it, Walmart should have known about it, it is unfortunate, but we need to do things the right way, and y'all take a lot of abuse, and y'all do a lot of good, and annoy some people and make some people happy, but this is not about making people happy or annoying people, this is just about doing the right thing and following the legal process, and that's what I encourage y'all to do.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. Anyone else like to participate in the public hearing?
James Sasser, 1146 Cohaba River Estates. I was probably in high school when this went, happened, so I apologize about that, I don't have any history like that, but, no, I do love this city, I went to Berry High School, and I don't hate Walmart, I shop at Walmart, so that's not where we're coming from here. I think really what it comes down to, just to echo it, is, you know, we believe that it is a contract, you know, I pay my taxes, and when we make agreements, I think you should follow through with them, not you, and I know this is not you personally, but like I said, I don't think anybody, I understand the trucking challenges with freight, because that's what we do in my industry, so if we need to sit down with Walmart and come to a compromise, I think there's a path there without any problems, but ultimately, the agreement still needs to stay in place, and like I said, I hope we can work this together. Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, my name's Paul Sanford, I live at 2605 Cohaba River Estates, and I'd like, first of all, thank each of you on the council for, and the city and city employees for all you do for our city. I know it's a thankless job, and I know you give a lot of your time to do that, and even those that are employed give a lot more than their paychecks warrant, so I want to get to say that first. I do, I do want to mention or echo the sentiment about pending litigation, I think that needs to be resolved. I think it is interesting that we now have a judge that wasn't a part of the original litigation, trying to decide the intent of a judge 20-plus years ago when they entered an order, I don't really understand how a judge today can, you know, read the intent of what the original judge intended, so I think that that topic needs to be fleshed out dramatically, significantly, but I think at the end of the day, the important thing is the fabric of the agreement. I mean, regardless of the rights the city has or may not have to enter into zoning decisions after something like this occurred, I think that needs to be resolved, and I think the city needs to have a good, clear understanding of their rights, and the parties that come to the city need to have a good understanding of the city's ability and their rights to do that, but I think at the end of the day, it really doesn't matter in this case, I mean, at the end of the day, the fabric of the agreement really should stand, the parties in good faith entered in, negotiated, entered into an agreement as to how this was gonna be, you know, the zoning conditions that were gonna be placed on the property, those zoning conditions have been in place for 20-plus years, all the parties have lived with them, there have been no complaints, you know, now we have one party wishing to change those, and they have an avenue to do it, and instead of choosing the avenue in the agreement, they chose to go through zoning, and we just, you know, we feel that the agreement that the neighborhood, the city, the developer, and Walmart all developed, entered into, should be upheld.
Yes, sir, come on down.
My name is Scott Gaskins, I am one of the newest members of Cohaba River Estates, myself and my son, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, both of us have property that we're trying to build on if we can ever get the crazy building costs kind of in line where we can get started. Anyway, I have a kind of a strange situation going on, I'm actually dealing with zoning issues in Bessemer in Jefferson County, I've got a plant nursery, and I actually have 30 acres out there, and I'm trying to get zoning changed from residential to agricultural on a big piece of unused flood zone property, it's really not suitable for residential, but in order to do so, I'm having to agree, if I want A1 zoning, that I'm not gonna have livestock, doesn't really bother me a whole lot, but I still have to make that agreement. I also have to agree that I won't put in trailers, like residential trailers, or trailers for farmhands and those kinds of things. I'm actually willing to make that agreement, even though that one hurts me a little bit, because I'd like to be able to do that for some of my H2A labor, but still, an agreement's an agreement. These are things that I have to do in order to get the zoning that I wish to proceed. In this case, I noticed the verbiage on the zoning is not changing, so I really don't see this as a zoning matter, I know I'm not an attorney, but if the zoning was changing, it might take this other agreement and make it null and void. This, to me, is an effort to strong-arm or overrule something that's a private agreement between our neighborhood and Walmart, and the city of Hoover and Colonial Properties, and that doesn't fall under zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskins. Address, Mr. Gaskins, can you repeat your address for us, please, sir?
651 Cohaba River Estates.
651 Cohaba River Estates. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to participate in the public hearing? Any member of the council wish to make a comment or ask a question?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
So, as representative on the planning and zoning board, this came, I think this was filed in March, so our first meeting was in April, and the same things were brought up about an agreement, so obviously, that kind of put the brakes on it, we continued it, and it became clear that we needed to do more digging, we asked our legal opinion from our city attorneys, and it was ultimately decided to go to court and ask for clarification, because our attorney's interpretation and our, you know, our interpretation of planning and zoning was different. In that process, and so we've continued it almost a year, you know, it's, we're coming up on a year, I guess the, a lot of this could be resolved, is through that process, that nine months, we never were able to see, we heard there was an agreement, but nobody was ever able to produce a, anything signed by the city or approve, I see in this news article, it says that, but nothing was in the record, nothing was filed. Mr. Corley, just to reiterate, do we have anything on file or as part of our discovery that indicates? or as part of our discovery that indicates that the city agreed to anything?
I've yet to see a fully executed copy of that agreement.
So a lot of this could be resolved if anybody here has the agreement that's signed by... We saw some that were signed by residents, but do we have anything that was signed by the city?
Mr. Vickery, you've had your opportunity, okay? Mr. Shaw speaking.
Yeah. Well, in one minute.
Mr. Vickery, please.
So that's what we're trying to, that's ultimately, I think, what a big component of this is, we have no record that there was one, that was such an agreement. You know, zoning changes from time to time, you know, that's part of what zoning is. And the gentleman who just spoke, if your needs on your land change, you could request the city to change that zoning. And if they said no, then you would not, it would not be granted. That's part of the process. And state law requires that process, you know? So anyway, so, Mr. President, that would be my question is, if anybody can produce this agreement that's been talked about, I think that would go a long way towards knowing if the city agreed to anything. But throughout the process, going from April to la... And we even continued it in planning and zoning last month as well. This was first, after the first, the judge ruled in November. We continued it in December to make sure it worked through that process. So this has been a long, long process to try to get to the bottom of this, but I think a lot could be solved if we, if anybody can produce an agreement that was actually, even if it was signed by a city official or anything like that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any other member of the council like to speak?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Legal. Can you give us an update on this case, number one? And then, number two, this is where I'm having a trouble here. We are passing an ordinance, just like in 1999, that council passed an ordinance. Their stipulations were part of that ordinance. I read it. Which is what the city does. The city enters into the agreement and passes the ordinance with the property owner. Just like the gentleman was talking about a few minutes ago. When you, when you talk about this case, I don't understand how a judge can come and take that constitutional power away from the city and give it to an HOA. I don't understand that because that's what I'm hearing. But just start out with the, with the, where we are on this case and kind of explaining what's going on there.
Well, first to answer your question, the court can't take that authority away absent some agreement or covenant that runs with the land. You know, our advice all along is that the city council has the authority to proceed with the consideration and adoption of this ordinance in its discretion. We believe that the court, let me back up and give you the status. So we filed, because this case arose almost 21, 22 years ago, and when the application first came in, we filed a motion to clarify with the court to get the court's feedback on whether or not they considered that order to be final and binding on the city in perpetuity for determining the zoning of this property. And the court on November 2nd, 2021, ruled in the city's favor and said that the no, the 2020, or the order from the year 2000 does not prohibit the city from subsequently changing the zoning conditions on this property. And after that order was rendered by the court, the plaintiffs filed a motion to reconsider and made the same arguments that they made in their opposition to our original motion. And so the court has requested orders for that. No new evidence was presented at that motion to reconsider. And so it's, as the parties have pointed out, and all due respect, when we can agree to disagree, but the matter is in front of the court. And our legal opinion and the court's position is that the council has the authority to move forward. Does that answer your initial question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corley. Thank you, Councilman Posey. Anyone else from the council like to speak? Have any questions? We will close the public hearing. We have a motion and second for adoption of the ordinance. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Nay.
Mr. McClinton?
Nay.
Mr. Leiter?
Nay.
Three ayes, three nays. The motion is to adopt is denied. Thank you. We'll move to item number 15, resolution number 6619-22. Mr. Corley.
This resolution approves the request of Mr. David Messina, representing the Universal Church, for a conditional use approval so that a church may be located at 3133 Lorna Road, Suite 109.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of resolution number 6619-22 or approval of resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the resolution. We will now open a public hearing and ask if there are members of the council have any questions or comments about this item. Any member of the public have a question or a comment? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. We'll have a first reading and set a public hearing for February 7th of item number 16. There will be no vote taken tonight, but we will have a public hearing on February 7th. Ordinance number 22-2548. Mr. Corley.
This ordinance modifies Chapter 10-36 of the Hoover Municipal Code to establish an alcohol and drug awareness program and traffic safety program.
We will gather again on February 7th to hear that item. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda. We now ask if there are any comments or questions from the council. I would like to welcome back from Quantico, Virginia, Exo Kenny Fountain. We know you've been to the FBI Academy. Did you graduate? Excellent. Well, welcome back. Congratulations. We've had many, many officers from Hoover PD go through that academy. And Kenny, you're one of a many, but we're very proud of you. Thank you for representing Hoover so well there, and welcome back. Glad to have you back. We now ask for public comments. Anyone has a public comment, they're welcome to come to the podium. Give us your name and address. You'll be recognized for three minutes. Ms. Ritchie?
Rebecca Ritchie, 4911 Twin Pine Circle. There's a city of Hoover ordinance 89857, approved January 3rd, 1990, that the city of Hoover will not allow the development of one site to cause adverse effect on the adjacent property. Magnolia Grove is adjacent to our properties, causes extensive damage to our yards every time we have a big downpour. There was a notice in a letter from Alabama Engineering, signed by Robert Easley, saying that the pipe that attaches, the pipe from Magnolia Grove is 24 inches. The pipe in our neighborhood is 18 inches. And that when there is peak water storm flows, it will not handle it. But the city still approved Magnolia Grove doing that. That letter was written on December 9th, 2013. Our first flooding event was almost exactly one year to the day from that letter, December 27th, 2014. And it has not stopped yet. And October 6th was just a disaster. I've said before that we've spent close to $20,000. Well, I finally found all the bills and everything. It's more like about $60,000. And until something is done to make Magnolia Grove fix the problem that they started, nothing is going to change. It is eroding our properties. It's destroying our grass. It's destroying our plants. It's destroying the areas around the foundations of our house. Thankfully, nothing has ever gotten into our house. But I figure that's only a matter of time. Now, I think seven years is long enough for us to wait for something to be done. And it's not just affecting our yards where we get the main brunt of it. It's also affecting where they getting sinkholes down on Sulphur Springs. And the property behind us, his yard, is being eroded too. So I wish the city would think about doing something to fix this problem.
Anyone else like to speak?
City Council, thank you very much for taking the opportunity to hear me. My name is Larry Wojcickowski. I live at 2112 Swan Lake Cove in South Lake. And I'm here tonight to talk about not only the storm damage that occurred on 10/6, but also the storm damage that has occurred with the silt runoff that we have been experiencing for the past 10 years. This is a map, our overall picture, of the Acton Creek that you can see, if you look closely, the sediment in this is clearly indicated. This is the one right off of our house. This happens every time we have a storm of 1/3 to 1/2 inch. We get this type of result. And it happens a lot. I have more than 20 documented cases of this type of silt damage that occurs. This is also silt damage right on the other side of our yard. And it continues to build. After the 10/6 storm, this doubled in size. There was that much sediment that came down. Why? Because we only have an 18 or 24-inch culvert to handle it. It can't. It comes down the gullies, washes it out completely, and we just go on from there. Debris that has come into the lake from those gullies being washed out. More debris. I think it's time that the city has got a system, the salt water, excuse me, the storm water management system doesn't and is not capable in South Lake of handling the runoff. And so I think the city of Hoover is in direct violation of their south, their storm water management program. I was down to the keys for what else we can talk.
Seal something.
So I think the key is that what we need to do is, we were not on the board that the city engineers showed as South Lake being one of the projects or even being considered. We were told by Blake Miller that they were going to come out and look at it. We have not had anybody show up. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
My name is William Carey, C-A-R-Y Carey. And I'm from 2117 South Wind Circle in South Lake. And the thing that I would like to present is the storm water system that's in place was not in compliance with the civil engineering that was originally done. And this storm water is going to, it represents a large amount of erosion. And the bulk of that erosion, it moves into the lake. So if it's okay, Mr. President, can I come around?
Sure.
Photo number one represents a six-foot deep. It says a six-foot man standing in there, 10 feet wide. This is north of my property. I own lot 77. The house was bought on, I've lived there 26 years. But also bought lot 76. So this erosion comes from the South Lake Parkway. So that's photo one. Photo two shows all of that sediment in the slough that takes it to my house. I used to see 3 and 4 pound bass in there. Now I can see rocks and sediment. So when I moved there, we didn't have that situation. This is a drawing that I obtained from Hoover Engineering Department. The green represents the way the civil engineer had routed the storm water system. But the red represents the way it was actually routed when it was installed. Then the blue represents a large gully. After we bought lot 76, I had installed a large settling basin and also underground pipe to carry that beneath lot 77. But this represents all that sediment in the slough. So I got to move quickly to the culvert, that's his phone box. That is one of the culverts that was installed, not where the civil engineer recommended it. So that, what you see at the top is the Parkway. So just below it is an massive amount of storm water. This is a second culvert that was installed from South Wind Circle, not where it was supposed to be installed. So we got two big culverts dumping large amount of storm water. The storm water...
And let me also say, we will be around after the meeting. The three minutes is really to respect the public that's here. So those of us that are able, if you'd like to visit after the meeting, we'd be happy to do that, okay? I'll be happy to stick around.
Sure. I look forward to it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for your understanding and patience. We'll, we'll, we'll visit after the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis.
Before the clerk starts, if you would, give me a few minutes to address the council. My name is Mark Davis. I live at 2116 South Wind Circle in South Lake. Before my time starts, through John Leiter, I sent you guys a history report, basically of South Lake, how it was developed, the whole Indian Valley area. If you get a chance to read it, it's really good. Carolyn Brent wrote it in 1990. It's entitled Mills, Mines, and Steels. I wanted to give you an overview of it, but I didn't have enough time about the history and the ecology. That would have taken up two of my three minutes. So with that, I'll go ahead and start my clock, please. Many times I've come before the council for good causes and opportunities beneficial to the city of Hoover. Tonight, I come in with my friends and neighbors of South Lake and Indian Valley with serious concerns about storm water runoff dumping into Indian Valley Lake. Indian Valley Lake began construction in 1972 with a cost of $729,000. Indian Valley Lake flows into Cohaba River. The lake was 110 acres and seven miles of shoreline. Indian Valley Lake is the largest and probably the oldest man-made lake in Hoover. We are probably the only lake in the area with our own biologist to maintain the lake. When Indian Valley Lake was built, anything below the elevation of 423 feet was considered part of the lake. Around 2008, I think that's the timeframe, Spain Park Retention Pond collapsed and dumped huge amounts of silt and water into Indian Valley Lake. That picture you saw a while ago, that was a result of that. Due to serious storm water runoff and silting over the years and the Spain Park Retention Pond failure, Indian Valley Lake is probably down to about 100 acres now. That's how much silt we've had coming into the lake. Now the problem. In South Lake, all sewage, and this is interesting, all sewage discharges from the homes down toward the lake. There are about 50 sewage manhole covers along the lake lots. There are about 50 sewage manhole covers along the lake lots, with about 40 right at or near the lake level. So think about the six feet of water we got with that storm. Most manhole covers sit there at an elevation of about 425 to 430 feet. There are nine sewage pumping stations in South Lake. They pump sewage up to South Lake Parkway and then over to the Sewage Treatment Park. I have three sewage manhole covers on my property, and they're over the, and, and I have a sewage pumping station just off there. The most recent storm runoff put almost six feet or more into the lake, well above the elevation for a lot of these manhole covers. So a lot of the lake dumped into the sewage treatment pumping system. In 2016, I noticed, when we moved there, I noticed the water sewage waste coming out of manhole cover on my property and spilling into the lake. I called 911, I didn't know who to call. Turns out, there were two pumps that failed, the telemetry to the city failed, and the backup generator failed. It's just one, one manhole cover. I told the city engineers about it. They salute, they told me, they said, "The solution to pollution is dilution." That's not a good answer for me. I requested water be tested. They conducted the testing. A day later, the contamination levels were down to an acceptable level. The city put out lime on my property to kill the E. coli bacteria. After the first sewage spill, I talked to the landscapers who were there for their previous homeowner. They said, "Oh, that happens all the time. We saw waste and paper, toilet paper and everything coming up out of there all the time." They never told anybody.
Mr. Davis-
This year, about a week before-
We will be here after the meeting, okay?
What's that?
We, we're down to our three minutes. I'm sorry. We will be here after the meeting. We will look forward to talking to you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Rob Belaz. I live at 427 Pine Way Drive. It's actually the property directly behind the riches. You know, as you've heard, there's something very wrong with the rainwater runoff management from Magnolia Grove. There's so much water coming toward our neighborhood, it's washing their yard away, it's washing the glasses yard away, it's washing my yard away. They've spent a lot of money. Part of that money was actually upgrading the drainage system in our neighborhood. They took out a pipe and they put in a really big pipe trying to deal with the water. That pipe's not big enough. There's no bigger pipe we can put in. That pipe runs from the street under their property directly parallel to, or perpendicular to mine where there's a drainage ditch. There's so much water coming out of that pipe, it's washing my yard down the ditch and across Sulphur Springs. I'm about to lose a tree and a fence. I'm going to spend $5,000 having riprap put in. This is not our job, right? This should not be our money. The city approved Magnolia Grove. There's a huge runoff problem. So I'm asking you guys to help us solve the problem. I mean, we didn't create it. We're spending a ton of our money trying to, you know, solve the problem that we didn't create. So has anyone gone up and looked at what's going on there? I mean, there, there's clearly something wrong. This isn't just a historic rain event. This is every time it rains, water comes pouring through our neighborhood. That can't be right. So either what was approved was inadequate, or what was constructed wasn't what was approved. But either way, we've got so much water coming through our neighborhood, kind of ruining our property because of that development. So I'd ask you guys, you know, to figure out who needs to go and look at what, but this isn't a problem we can solve in the middle of the hill. There's no way we can catch and dispose of that amount of water. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Ali Daniels. I'm at 4921 Sulphur Springs Road. I'm along here with the rest of the citizens here that experiencing the issues dealing with storm drain pipes that are not adequately, adequately, I'm sorry, allowing water to run its course when it, when it rains. My property as well is slowly just draining away. It's a house on the community. I did have some engineers that came out and took a look at what's going on on the property a little bit, but I, I don't, I don't know how far or how in depth these engineers go. But the most that I see is just standing around looking. How far do these engineers go to see what the problem is? And as of yet, let me address this while I still haven't, haven't received a letter from the city addressing the complaint that we put in to try to get some kind of help dealing with, or get a correct answer as to what can and what can't be done on the property as far as repairs. I just implore the city if they can just help us look a little bit more into the issue. If we have an issue, it's beginning at Magnolia. From there, we can clearly see that things are coming out from there that are continuing to happen that's causing our property to erode away. Just on my property alone, I'm able to tell that there are different sized pipes that runs down along the side of my property, and the pipes have shifted and they're, it's, it's ugly. Water is pouring from up under the pipes, and if we can look clearly at some point on my property, you can definitely look up and see that there's an issue closer to the street as well that may be the actual cause. That's the reason why water is constantly eroding the property or causing the pipes to shift or deteriorate, whatever the case may be. But there is an issue, and I don't think that I'm asking as a citizen along with the rest of the citizens here, is that maybe we can get a closer look, get some engineers that can get a closer look at what's going on from Magnolia all the way down to Sulphur Springs Road. Because right now, I'm not the only neighbor on Sulphur Springs Road, my other neighbors are not here, but I have neighbors that lives across, that lives across the street from me that are also experiencing a lot of storm drain issues and sinkholes and things like that. And we are pouring out money to try to get things situated, but we need some help. I think that the city can help us out a little bit more than what's, than what, than what's been probably told to us. So right now, I would like to see if we can get more help. And again, I have yet to receive a letter from the city, and I think it was stated a couple of months ago that letters had went out to citizens, but my address have yet to receive a letter from the city addressing what, what our complaint was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Ma'am?
Hello, I'm Bridgette Harris. I'm actually counsel for Walmart, and unfortunately, I did not realize that you all weren't going to ask legal counsel for Walmart questions before you all voted. And I'm in favor, of course, for application 222547, which is number 14 listed. The reasons being, I have attended all of the hearings that have been before Judge Hatcher, although Walmart is not an actual entity that is a part of that pending litigation. As the legal counsel for Walmart, I've had the opportunity to sit in and, sit in on those hearings and, of course, read all of the briefing. As what has already been stated or a question that was posed earlier, whether or not an executed settlement agreement was ever presented to the court, Judge Hatcher never saw an executed settlement agreement. I never saw an executed settlement agreement, and the City of Hoover never saw an executed settlement agreement. And so that's one of the reasons why, of course, Judge Hatcher ruled in the City of Hoover's favor and actually said that the City of Hoover does have the statutory authority to actually switch the zoning from 7:00 AM to 4:00 AM merely so that Walmart can get fresh produce to the people that actually live in the City of Hoover, those patrons that actually do use the Walmart. And I know that some members have come before you and said that they don't use that Walmart, but there are people in the City of Hoover using that Walmart, or else that Walmart wouldn't be in business. And like I've stated, the judge has already ordered that the City of Hoover actually has this, has this authority. So what's going to happen now, because the Kaba HOA filed a motion to reconsider, the judge is going to rule again, and I, I really do believe she's going to rule once again in the City of Hoover's favor because there's been no new evidence that the Kaba HOA has actually presented the judge. And so with no new evidence or no new case law, as you all may know, based on the briefing and based on what you've read, the Alabama law is that the City of Hoover actually does have this authority. And so without any new evidence, without any new authority, Judge Hatcher is once again going to rule in the City of Hoover's favor, and we will have to bring this before you all again because an order from a judge is going to be binding. That 2000 order, the order that the Kaba HOA has referenced, there is nothing in that order that restricts the City of Hoover's authority to actually switch that zoning time from 7:00 AM to 4:00 AM. And so that's why Judge Hatcher, in her interpretation of that order, she's not interpreting the intent of the judge from 2000. Judge Hatcher is interpreting the law. And when she has interpreted Alabama law the same way I've interpreted it, it is that the City of Hoover actually has that authority. And so I just wanted to bring that to you all's attention because I did not know that I was supposed to come up here and speak. I thought questions would be posed. And that's really everything. The only other thing, the court has not ordered an automatic say. I know that was mentioned by someone, with all due respect, from the Kaba HOA, but that is not something that has taken place to date.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. President, if I could ask a quick question?
Sure.
Mr. Corley, just to be clear, the council did act tonight, correct? Right. So I, I believe the question of whether we had the authority to act, I mean, we, I think we answered that in, in voting on the matter, so.
Yes.
Anyone else like to speak tonight?
I have all the time to communicate.
Anyone else? Very good. Thank you for attending. Regard.
Yeah, I'm so good, sweetheart. I'm 24, 21 years old. We're thinking, 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 we're thinking. 21 years, sweetheart.